For the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is established, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no public hearings this evening. There are -- was there an adjustment to the agenda that you wanted to make?
I think I made it. I don't know, I'll think about it.
Okay, all right. Citizens' comments. I don't see any, okay? Select Board comments. It's unusual. Do you have anything to say, Jan?
Have we already got them to me?
Yeah. Nobody's indicating they have anything to say.
Well, I'll say something. Somebody's gotta say something. Well, a lot of nice things have happened in town since we were here last. We had a race, the Icy Elf Race, I believe, and that brought in 79, I think, applicants and 72 runners. That's a lot of people to bring into town for a day. And I think we can thank Long Winter Soap Farm and Lucas McNally for organizing that race. We had nice caroling, went up and down the streets caroling. And it had a very nice -- and then we had the firemen's thing, they had a very nice crowd out there, so we had some really nice holiday events, I think that's good. And I would say, I've just spent today at the middle school and yesterday at the high school. And I think today, particularly at the middle school, middle school kids are unusual, you know? And today, I went in, and I know what they're like, so I knew what to expect. Well, I have to tell you, if anyone had gone into that classroom, and that was a whole wing of students today, they would have been very proud of our young people. They were the most respectful, kind to me, kind to each other. They did. All they did was work. They're working on World War I. And I keep a good eye out, and that's the computers were all on World War I, the books were all on World War I, and so was the writing. It was, and that was four different classes that came through. And I just have to say, I think you would be proud of our young people. So I wanted to put that out there. And the high school, they're always, I was teaching AP Physics, that was really fun, and --
Yeah.
With some help. But they too, listen to them trying to solve problems, you know, being problem solvers amongst themselves, is really a delightful thing. So I just wanted to put that out. So be proud of our young folks here.
Thank you. Anybody else? Julie, town manager report?
Found it. My email. I just wanted to give you a couple little updates. We did, we are going to have to schedule a meeting with the Town of Jefferson about EMS coverage issues, so if two of you wouldn't mind attending with me to the Select Board, I think that would be a good thing. I know, Abdon, that was one of your concerns during the budget. Also, we sent a letter off to Warren as there are, we have been covering more in Warren. We're working on our RFP with LED, well, the award of the LED streetlights with our neighboring communities. We're still waiting to hear back from Spectrum on when to expect Chapel Road connectivity for Internet. We had an excellent, I think, meeting yesterday with the YMCA Lincoln Health.
Yeah.
And that was what we wanted to add to the agenda was the discussion of what people should be involved in that first meeting. Maine Water, they are working on the increase, the rate increase proposal, and they will be back in February. And you got your finance reports, and I just wanted to remind everybody that Thursday night is our Budget Committee meeting. Very exciting, and I just wanted to give you an idea of what we're going to be discussing, which is our capital plans. And after the last meeting, I was asked to model borrowing versus saving. So I've come up with these neat little sheets for everything that we might want to discuss. It gives you a plan and what the annual debt service would be for each item, so that we can then look and see what are we doing and how long is it taking us? And what we're seeing a great deal of is that for the same cost of what we're putting in to save for something, it's the same cost although you are paying more. It's a more level debt service out through the year, so that's just a little preview of what you'll be seeing. So I'll be able to present that to you Thursday night, and it starts at 6:00. So if you're interested in the budget, come and see us. It should be a good time. That's all I really have.
Thank you. Just to embellish a bit on your report, that meeting we did have yesterday with the leadership forum, we had folks from Lincoln County Health there, we had people from the Y there, we had people from Booth Bay there, they have an amazing resources group in Booth Bay, and it was just, it was a great charrette. We had some great ideas that were thrown out. And I think we all walked away inspired with the idea that we would like to get something started here, and we'd like to identify people who would be interested in this, and if they're not interested, we'd like to drag them in so that they are interested, but get a really good cross-section of people living in Waldeboro to talk about the needs of the town and where, and how we can address those needs. It was a really good meeting.
I thought the Lincoln Health portion of it is, just the services that they offer that we didn't realize that they do offer, and what the Booth Bay region is doing as far as outreach to the public with the BR-CRC is amazing. So I did reach out today to the head of that organization to have a chat with them.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Consent calendar. Entertained a motion, please?
Make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Okay. And review of Recreation Committee survey. I believe Marcus.
Marcus is here.
That's you.
Some of my committee members.
That's wonderful.
Can you come up there?
Yes, please.
There we go. We do. You want to audition?
Yeah. I had something I must throw up, but we'll deal with it. So I sent out the Recreation Committee survey that we kind of came up with as a group. Back when we started our committee, you guys charged us with finding out the feasibility of a recreation center in Waldeboro, and so we figured the best way to do that was to find out what people wanted, what people needed, and how much they were willing to pay to make that happen or not pay to not make that happen, and what they wanted included in a facility like that. So we think our survey kind of covered all of that, and we just brought it to you to have you approve it before we sent it out to the public. We had received an grant, Ask Grant, that will pay for almost, if not all, of the postage to send it to every household in Waldeboro. So if you have any questions or criticisms, just take it.
I filled mine out.
Yeah.
Because I've got a copy of it.
Yeah.
Just that way I would know what it was like. I had trouble filling out the bottom part here. Oh, and how much I would pay. I had trouble with that one, too. But that's mine. But yeah, I've had --
Once you guys approve it, I'll put it into a nice postage envelope and take it over to the post office and see what they, how much it's going to cost and whatnot to get that all sent out, but the sooner we get it sent out, the better, and then when we get them back.
So how many people are you going to send it out?
Every household in Waldeboro. I think that's --
I'm just curious, because you asked if he was, one of the questions, are you a resident of Waldeboro?
Yeah.
So if it goes to a Waldeboro resident, I'm sure that it's a resident of Waldeboro.
Well, we hope so.
Are we sending?
Do you want to reach out?
There's gonna be, we're gonna send it to everybody. We talked, when we were making that, we did talk about having it at some, like, events where people could fill it out, so that's why we put, did we put address on there?
Street.
Street, yeah.
Yeah.
So we put that so that we would know if somebody filled it out twice, not that anybody would.
Are we sending a self-addressed stamped envelope for return, or how are we returning it?
That's gonna be a financial decision once we figure out how much it's gonna cost. If we, once I find out how many actual households there are and how much it's gonna cost to send it, however much money we have left over, if we can put a paid return envelope in it, we would like to, we would hope that would get more, more feedback back to us.
How are you gonna collate all that information?
Carefully.
Yeah. I just --
By number.
By numbers, spreadsheets.
Up to 18.
But it's, it's not something you're gonna be able to use a machine to do, it's gonna be by hand?
Yeah.
Wow.
Karen's doing it.
It's a lot of work.
She's good and fast.
She is, she's very fast.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. So Marcus, will this be right on the website?
Like, I wanted to fill this out, but I go to the website and get it.
Yeah, we're gonna send one to your house, but --
Yeah, okay.
We could probably put it up there if people wanted to go up there and get it.
Mm-hmm.
Because like I said, we had that street address thing on there, so we know if, you know, if you send in the one that we send to your house and you, and you fill out another one and send it in, well, at least now we'll be able to duplicate a copy from you so we can --
Daryl, how many, how many parcels are in? How many when we mail it out?
When we mail out, it's around 3,000.
Okay. We, I think our Ask Grant was up to $2,000, paid around there, so I don't know what the bulk rate is to send it out, I don't know what it would be, it depends how big it is and whatnot, so I'll have to find out what the post office says.
We might be able to do it.
What are you considered to be a reasonable return rate? How many of these would you like to get back in order to get information that you consider to be reliable?
We looked at that, and Troy might be able to help me. Was it like 10%? Was it something like that?
The typical, the typical return rate is very low nationally, like, on a feasibility study, it's usually like 7%. Obviously, we'd like to try to get so much push, so it's a greater number than that, so it represents more communities, but often these are done by feasibility or consultant companies that do these, plus a variety of them to collate all the information. So we kind of use surveys from other communities similar to ours asking the same stuff, so...
I'd like to think we would do better because it's gonna be personal.
Have you thought about drop-off spots, like the library and the drugstore where boxes are?
We've talked about that, we haven't put anything in place yet.
Okay, yeah. They've done that before.
So if, it kind of depended, once we find out if we're gonna have a paid return envelope or not, that kind of depends a lot on what we're gonna do, really, just depends how much it's gonna cost us to get it sent out.
When we did the broadband survey, refresh my memory, John, we got in over 10% on that, didn't we?
Yes.
It was a pretty good survey. The only, the only concern I have is this may be skewed toward families with younger kids as opposed to older folks like me. I'm gonna fill it in.
It has, it has certain things, and it has old folks.
I know, but the returns are gonna, yeah, might be skewed.
Why?
Could be.
Toward the younger family instead of the older folks.
Depends on, I think it depends on the level of interest in the person.
Yeah, it'd be their interest.
Well, you'll be able to tell, based on the results.
Yeah, we'll have all that evidence.
Yep. That's good. Any other comments or questions?
I would, do you need a motion to let him move ahead on this?
Absolutely, yeah.
I would move that.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you so much.
Good job.
Max is next.
Medical marijuana.
Max! You're up for medical marijuana.
Tied note on this one.
You're the expert.
Well, what do people want to know?
Why do we need a moratorium for the medical marijuana?
Yeah.
Or, or what is?
Do we need?
Do we need one?
Yeah. Explain this.
Explain your memo.
Yeah.
Explain my memo, okay. So as some of you may know, if you follow state legislation, LD 1539 was recently put into effect in December. This was the amendment to the current medical marijuana laws that's really changed the commercial aspects of medical marijuana. And I want to be very clear on something, that I'm talking about medical marijuana only, not adult use or recreation, none of that, this is solely medical. I want to be clear on that. In LD 1539, there was a new provision put in that mentioned opting in for municipalities. So if we want to allow retail caregivers, like what was recently passed this year at Cedar Hill and Herbal Solutions at the top of the hill, or Highbrow for another example, all those are considered retail caregivers under state law.
Retail or medical?
Retail, medical caregivers. It's, it was a doozy, but this says that those operations wouldn't be allowed unless the municipality allows those in its ordinance. So we do not have something in our ordinance expressly saying we allow medical retail caregivers so they would not be allowed in town until the Select Board or the town decides to approve that. Now, this does grandfather those that have been approved before December, so those three that I mentioned earlier, they are allowed in town still because they were given municipal approval, and of course, anyone who operates from their home. In our ordinance, we do have medical marijuana dispensaries. This was something that was allowed, I believe, in 2013 is the --
I think so.
Year Bob told me. I believe that was put in because one of the portions of the medical marijuana law originally said we had, we had to include or may include language involving medical marijuana dispensaries. The town did. That language has now been removed. But because we still have this in our ordinance, it is still considered us opting in. But this is only for dispensaries, not caregivers or any other, or social clubs or anything of that nature, just a dispensary. So if we would like to remove this language, we may do so with one of two options. One is the moratorium, something that is in your agendas right now. That is an option, where you can call a moratorium, and no dispensaries would be allowed to, to come for town approval, and during that time, you would, you would task some poor unfortunate soul working in the planning department to adapt the language however you would like it to be, whether it's basic spelling corrections or just removing the whole thing. Then, at the end of the moratorium, the town would vote on whether to adopt the new language. All of this would be done by June, most likely, just so it's on the town ballot and the whole town has the chance to vote and set up just a special meeting where 10 or 20 people might vote, whoever reads the newspaper. No offense.
So how many dispensaries are allowed in Maine?
In Maine, because of the new amendments, 16, I believe.
And how many exist?
Before the law, the limit was eight.
And eight exist?
I'm not sure on that. And for medical marijuana dispensaries, the only place that's allowed in Waldeboro is zoned as Route 1 Commercial A. So that's the more, that's the parts along Route 1 that isn't the corridor, so from Moody's to Tucker Shepherd Lane, let's say. That is Route 1 B. Anything along Route 1 outside of that is Commercial A.
So the dispensary is not somewhere where the average public goes to buy marijuana? It's where, right? Or am I confusing it?
Are you saying the difference between a dispensary and a caregiver?
Yes.
A caregiver has their set number of people, let's say five to 10. A dispensary can sell on a larger scale to anyone, including caregivers.
You're not saying that under the current ordinance, caregivers are allowed?
Correct.
But we do have them?
We do, because state law allowed them --
Right.
And gave a separate definition for them, which Waldeboro did not put in the ordinance.
And that's why the planning board approved them?
That, yes.
They didn't have --
Because they were considered retail, because we didn't have any language difference separating them from regular retailers.
So would the proposed moratorium put a stop for a period of time?
Correct.
To dispensaries, which have to be licensed by the state anyway?
Correct.
To caregivers?
Caregivers are not allowed in the town, even without the moratorium.
Even without it?
Correct. Because of LD 1539, we would have to specifically state in our ordinance, or you would have to pass something saying, we will allow medical caregivers, retailers.
You're talking, when you say caregivers, you're talking retail caregivers.
Retail.
Because someone in their home, there's no restriction.
Someone in their home, they're still allowed.
Right.
So I've --
But this is someone buying a commercial space to operate their medical caregiver business.
Yeah. I'm looking at the current ordinance.
Yes.
It's, it doesn't even read well. I mean, there is a sentence in there that's a hanging sentence. It's not related to anything, and I have a hard time understanding how this was ever, ever approved.
Page 5, dash 56.
There it is, right there. That's your hanging sentence. It's just stuck in there. It's not related to anything.
He stops there, right?
So I, you know, I, I'd be in favor of a moratorium, at least until June 30th, so we can get this thing straightened out.
Yes. That is one option.
If nothing more.
That is one option. And the second option is, we are, we, it has been recommended to form a land use committee to look at the entire ordinance. However, that, to have something, to have a new ordinance put forward to you revising that language through that process, it may take two years, so I don't know if, if you would like to get rid of this quickly, then the moratorium is the option you'd like to do if you don't want to be, if you believe there's already a committee tasked with it and you just want them to deal with it, then there's your second option. But for the first option, I'd recommend at least throwing it to, say, the planning board so that it's a more public discussion rather than just someone in the back room doing it without any input.
So we have three caregivers.
Retail, yeah.
Right, retail, that's what I meant. We have three retail caregivers in Waldeboro, and we can have no more. Is that correct?
We can have no more because until, unless the town chooses to opt in.
Okay. And we have no dispensaries.
None.
But we could have one. Is that what this is saying?
Correct. Because when this ordinance was written, the state of Maine's law said the limit is eight, so I believe that language was put in. That's where I was also confused, because you're supposed to allow, but you're never supposed to limit how many commercial, pro, commercial businesses are allowed. That language confused me originally.
Okay.
But yeah, we're only allowed one.
Then it says this, I didn't quite get this, the infrastructure in this district, which is the --
Yep, yep.
-- toward the B, right?
Yep.
Greatly decreases the possibility of a dispensary and cultivation facility from operating. Why?
I said that because, looking at properties on Route 1, I, that's just more of my personal guess of, someone would have to make a very huge investment if they would want to do it, because there's not that many available properties, first of all, and then those that are available are either greatly underdeveloped or don't have connections to sewer, water, or anything of that nature.
Okay.
That's my question.
And you want the Select Board to move forward with creating land use, the committee?
Yes.
Which, I think we're working on that.
Whereas, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Where is the Herbal Solutions?
Up on top of the hill.
At the top of the hill.
Is that the vape place?
Well, yes and no. The owner of the vape shop owns the whole building, and Herbal Solutions is gonna be in the other half. It was a weird.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I didn't know about that.
So they're grandfathered under the existing one?
Correct.
So technically, we don't need the moratorium for them because we get to allow them in, correct?
Yeah, it's for anybody else.
Any other.
Yes. And retail caregivers, none unless the town chooses to opt in.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah.
Dispensaries, this is the only considered opt-in movement.
My understanding would be, though, that if we did opt in, the town is right to say where the retail caregivers would go.
Yes.
It's kind of right to say how many there could be in the town. You could say we want, it goes here, but only three of them.
I'm not sure of that.
Could we find out because?
I will find out, but I believe that language is detested because it makes it seem like the town is favoring certain businesses, but I will check in that a little more.
In my understanding, because I think that for those of us that are not, who are not opposed to medical marijuana, right, who understand that it could have a purpose, we'd like to know exactly the span, it wasn't clear to me reading what I saw, what the span of control would be for the town if it opted in. No, there's clearly a zoning, there's a zoning right for the town to say where.
Yeah.
But I, it wasn't clear to me if you could limit the number or what exposure you would have if you did opt in.
I do not believe so on limiting the number, but I will look into that.
Okay.
Because I believe the dispensary was a special case because it said statewide, only X number could be allowed. I don't think that's the case for carriers.
And, and then the question would be in your mind, if we did have a moratorium and we did do land use, how long would it take, do you think, for a considered land use description of this property to take?
I, I meant, the two, the two options were more detached. The moratorium route would be, do your moratorium, task someone else with it other than the land use committee, so that you can meet your June deadline of having it put to a vote when the moratorium would expire. The second option is not doing the moratorium and having the land use committee.
Let's say you did the moratorium and you did planning, you did, how long would it take you? Because part of this would be zoning.
Correct.
To really figure out where it should go if it did go, how long would it take?
For revising the dispensary language, we would certainly attempt to have it ready by the April deadline to submit it for the June ballot.
Craig, did you have a comment?
I do, and it probably kind of getting us off track. Let's say the guy at the top of the hill has marijuana there, regular marijuana, recreational marijuana, can't sell it, of course.
Correct. He would lose that right actually.
But could he, at that time, do like I do in a poll and says, all right, we're not gonna charge you, but we'll give you a charitable donation charge, or you can give me a donation for marijuana?
For recreational use? That's something that would be brought to the code enforcement officer's attention, and it would likely result in them losing their approval from the town, since they are no, because in both, in all these cases, we have made sure that these people would not be doing recreational selling. It would only be for their medical caregivers.
Because there's a building in town that's growing some marijuana that has something to do with him.
I would suggest you speak to Stan Waltz about that, because I certainly would also like to hear more about this, too. Don't know if that answers it now, because this, this is --
Is Stan, is Stan available? I mean, he's been sick, right?
Right, right now, he was, he was here today, so I'm not sure, he's not in tomorrow.
He's back.
Yes, he's not in tomorrow because he's in Damerskada, but Thursday in the morning or anytime Friday.
I kind of look at this as a two-step process. One is to repair what we have.
Yes.
And I would refer that to the planning board and ask them to fix it and get it on the June ballot.
Well, I think --
And have a moratorium in the meantime.
I think Max wants to fix that, correct? Is that what you were looking for us for?
I take what --
To tax you for doing that?
I originally wasn't supposed to be here, so I didn't know what you guys were actually gonna do tonight. You can do, you can task whoever you want with it, whether it's just the planning department or the planning board or the marijuana committee or EDC for all I care, just tasking it with someone and -- Just tasking it with someone and saying, setting out the guidelines of what you would want to do to the ordinance is what, is what I am telling you for the moratorium.
The reason why I say Max is because the planning board only meets so often.
It should be Max.
And.
And it should be what you want.
Right.
Yes.
But we would need a moratorium to do this.
Right, the moratorium.
To have time to go over this.
Ordinance.
And rewrite.
Your first choice is, do you want to put a moratorium? And I would do that. If you're going to do that, then we need to make that decision.
Yes.
You need to make that decision, not wait.
Well, do we, we don't have any formal wording for the moratorium in front of us.
We can do that next meeting.
Okay.
With a moratorium, again, I would just ask, as the select board as a whole, you just tell me what you would like done in this ordinance, whether it is.
Not the ordinance, it's the moratorium.
The moratorium, well.
Well, the ordinance, right, but let's not put the cart before the horse. Let's deal with the moratorium first and worry about the ordinance, because they're not going to know tonight what they want in the ordinance, so.
Yes.
What do you want, do you want a moratorium with language that you can vote on it, to put it on for a vote the next meeting?
I'd like two things. I'd like the moratorium language, and I'd like to direct our planner to fix what we have, so you can read it and it makes sense. And then the third thing would be to have the longer-term committee, the comp plan committee, deal with the issue.
Okay.
However they recommend that it be dealt with.
Okay.
Without prejudicing what they.
But why are we fixing an ordinance?
Because it's.
But, but the moratorium's going to make that null and void while they're working on it.
That's right.
So we don't need to fix the ordinance just yet.
If we don't get things, well, we need to fix it irregardless, because it's not going to be ready by the time the moratorium is finished. If we have a three-month moratorium.
Sure.
And you haven't, we haven't completed the other work, we have nothing to replace.
But you can go longer with the three-month.
We have nothing to replace this.
You can go longer.
Uh, I'd, I'd rather get this right. And I don't know what the intent was. I mean, I don't know what minimum operated at all times that the facility is not open, blah, blah, blah. I have no idea what that's in reference to, or what it's supposed to mean.
But are we asking, we're getting a moratorium, and then during that time, our planning department?
Yeah.
Well, our planning department would work on that.
But you have to tell them how you want that fixed.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's the main thing that I just need to know. Once you approve your moratorium, what language you want finished and if you just.
I just want it to make sense, Max. I mean, the intent in this is to have dispensaries won.
But that might not be what you want.
And one registered, one registered cultivation facility.
And of course, when I do, and of course, I would keep the select board updated on any updates that I do make.
Yes.
But you might not want that ordinance to exist anymore.
But I don't object to the ordinance existing, because it's.
Right, but you may not, but that's a, right, that's what I'm saying, is tonight might not be, tonight we have to decide. You guys have to decide, do you want the moratorium, and we can work on the wording for the next meeting? Then you can have the debate about whether or not you should have the ordinance.
I like that plan.
Yeah.
Isn't that a good, that's a really good plan.
I'm very excited about this.
It's a great plan, truly.
I love it when a plan comes together, and that's way too old for you. You're not going to even know what reference that is. The A Team!
Yes.
What's, what is the, what's the, what's the consent?
Make a motion for the moratorium.
And how long? Give Max some guidance here. How long do you want that moratorium to be for?
How long would you like a moratorium?
Six months?
Twelve years.
Three months, isn't it?
Three months, isn't it?
To give it.
Well, you can, but you can go longer.
Yeah, you can go a hundred and eighty days.
Six, six months would put it to June, which the town would have been voted by now.
Six months.
Yep. Third of July.
So Katie Witchenbach had a six-month moratorium.
So if we're, if we're adopting the moratorium at our next meeting, then we're looking at sometime after mid-June?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. It would expire at that time, but hopefully we would.
We'd have language by then.
And hopefully by then, we'd have language that fixes this.
Yes.
Okay.
Or does a way, does whatever.
Yeah.
Whatever the select board would like.
Right.
Clint?
That's what you want it to be.
Are you okay with six months?
So, there won't be no actual language in June.
Aren't we on, I, I already made the motion.
Sorry.
We need a second.
I think there was a second.
Well, yeah.
There was a second.
Oh, I didn't hear it, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Now the discussion.
All right, is there any further discussion about a six-month moratorium to give Max guidance on where we're going with this?
So there won't be no vote on anything in June?
Yes, there technically could be, yes.
Could be, could be.
Because by that time, it would have.
They'll have something all worked out with it.
Yes.
Correct.
Maybe.
Maybe, okay.
Maybe, maybe.
So the motion on the floor is we ask Max to write up the language for a moratorium of six months, and to look at that moratorium language at our next meeting. That's the motion on the floor.
At our next, our next meeting?
Our next meeting. Yeah, and that, and if that motion's been seconded, is there any further discussion on that? All in favor? Okay, thank you.
I will write up the moratorium.
Thank you, Max, you're wonderful.
Love you, man.
Watch the A Team on Netflix. Your assignment for the evening.
You're probably not done, though, Max, because electric vehicle charging stations is up next. Don't go anywhere.
We all get Teslas.
Yeah. I, I sort of wanted this to be on the agenda tonight. The Efficiency Maine is going to make some money available to towns along the Route One Corridor. To install fast charge stations for electric vehicles.
Level three, yep.
Yep. And I think that we ought to look seriously at seeing who in Waldaburrow might be interested in hosting those charging stations. There are those of us who think that the internal combustion engine is history.
My heart is crying.
Within the next ten to fifteen years, they will probably not be allowed. Or if they are, it will only be as a hobby. They've already come up with a pickup truck with seven hundred and forty horsepower and a very short charging time that will be coming out in production models in two years. Europe is basically doing everything they can to get rid of ICE engines, and I think it's important for us to be on the cutting edge of this. Not to do it is an indication to me that we're not as forward-looking as we should be. The whole point of the Efficiency Maine proposal is for the town to endorse hosting this thing. It doesn't mean we have to put up any money. At all, all it means we really have to do is encourage a couple of businesses in town. I'm looking at heading north, maybe Hannafords, they've already got five of them in the state. Coming south, maybe Tucker Chevrolet, or someplace up near Moody's. No, not Moody's, that's on the other side of the road. But there, we could do a north-south kind of thing, where people going either direction have an ability to stop and recharge their vehicles.
And how long does it take to recharge?
A little fast charge. Recharger should be about thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes.
And what do they do for thirty minutes?
Ah, that's the kicker, you see.
Hannaford, they go shopping.
They might go shopping, they might go have a meal at Moody's, they might. They might decide to drive around the village, they might decide.
Because I can't afford it.
Yeah, but that's the whole point. The whole point is. The highest, the, 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 the best-selling luxury car, and this is a luxury car, I'm talking about. The best-selling luxury car in America today is the Tesla.
And how much is a Tesla?
About as much as a horse and buggy.
That's, that's not the point, Katie.
Yes, it is, because I can't afford it.
But, that's fine, but it's not about you.
I know, but it's, I'm, I'm just in general.
I'm just going to sit down and tell you that question.
Yeah, okay. Fair enough.
Well, I hope it's not ten to fifteen, my car's sixteen years old now, I.
Yeah, well, mine's got two hundred and nineteen thousand miles on it, but, you know, that's, that's the way. I'm waiting, I'm not going to buy a new one until.
Tell me he's nuts.
I know, I'm talking about the truck, not the car, but, yeah. This is the reality we're facing, and Maine can either join the stream, or it can swim against the current. And it's time for us to stand up and start swimming downstream with everybody else instead of upstream.
I don't mind, I don't mind the stations.
Okay.
But don't tell me to go out and buy.
I'm not going to, I'm not telling you to do anything. So all I'd like to do is, is a sense of the board that we would support hosting a couple of these, and maybe more, a couple of these charging stations somewhere along the Route One Corridor in Waldaburrow.
As long as it don't cost a taxpayer a dime.
As long as it doesn't cost a taxpayer a dime.
It's plug-in spots, right?
Great.
Question, are them, uh, electric cars and the plug-ins all the same?
Yes.
I understand they're not.
They, I, my understanding is they've adopted a standard, and that's why the state of Maine has charged, what's the name of the company they have, they've hired?
ChargePoint.
Yeah, not the state of Maine, but Efficiency Maine has hired a company that, that.
ChargePoint, yeah.
Yeah, ChargePoint, thank you, yeah. So it's all standard, and.
The one at the Chevy garage in Augusta is different than the one at the Hannaford store in Augusta.
Do you know that for a fact?
There are some charging stations that do have two different things, because there's one, I'm not an expert on it, but I believe there's.
The Volt.
Volt, yeah, Volt is the.
Chevy.
Brand that has the one charging station only for them, and then every, everyone else decides to use the universal one.
Well, we're looking for, what they're going to be using is the universal connection. Yeah. If you have a Chevy Volt, you'll go onto Tucker and charge it there. They'll have one, they'll have, they'll have one there in any event.
Yeah, what I didn't see in here, is there a charge to use this, or no?
Yes.
There is.
Tesla pays for it, if you use it, they'll get reimbursed by Tesla, or else you have to pay for it, yourself.
And if you have one of those cars, your fill-up is like four bucks to, you know, to drive another.
But disposing of the batteries will ruin the environment, so we'll be fine.
You fill up with electricity?
So all I'm, all I'm asking for is a sense of the board to support Max and Bill in their efforts to locate folks in town who might be, have, have an interest in this.
He's up again.
I want to just quickly say, Bill and I both have agreed, we're waiting until an RFP is put out by Efficiency Maine, just.
Exactly, no, you've got to have an RFP in hand. Yep, I agree.
So we'll come back with that RFP before we do anything?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
But I don't want them spinning their wheels and then to come back until we're not interested in this.
We'll all have new ones by then.
I think we are interested in it, so.
My charging station will be a bale of hay and some grain.
Bale of hay, green, I love it.
Thank you, man.
Do I, do I go take my seat, or is the next thing also me?
No, you're good.
You're good. Next thing is Clint, Spirit of America Ward.
Actually, we, we talked about this a while ago, but it's, it's, I don't know how we address the person.
Well, I think we've all in, I think informally, we've all discussed and decided on a person that we don't want to announce, because it's a surprise. So if that's the name that we're good with, I'd like to put that in, and then in October, that's when the county does their ceremony. So is, does everybody know who I'm talking about? If not, I will have the conversation later.
We do.
Okay, so we're all good with that? Okay, I will make that happen.
I'll move that, if you need.
Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
Is there any further discussion?
Just one thing on the, not from the person you spoke to, but the one who sent the email. It did say what that February twenty-eighth.
Right.
Deadline was, that they will publicize our town as a pace setter.
Yes.
So, pub, you know, publishing good things about our town is always good.
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thanks, Clint.
Yep.
Appointment of Jim Russo to the planning board.
I'm voting. I make a motion. I, I move to nominate Jim Russo to our planning board.
Second.
Any discussion?
Who is Jim Russo?
Jim Russo is a man who lives in Waldaburrow, he's owned property here for quite a while. He's retired, I believe he's an engineer of sorts, although he doesn't have a train. And, um, he. He wanted to share his talents with Waldaburrow. He looked around, he went, he's gone to some of the meetings, and he felt that that was a good fit and that he could be helpful. We interviewed him, and he's willing.
Any further discussion? Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. That was unanimous. Appointments to Comp Plan Land Use Committee.
So we still have citizen interviews to do, but we so far have had Shellfish, Charles Reed has agreed from the Shellfish Committee to sit on the.
Nice.
Committee, which is nice. Uh, EDC, we have George Seaver, planning board, we have Sarah Hotchkiss, and then we just have the citizen interviews to set up.
Of the, you mentioned Conservation Commission?
Correct.
Karen is not interested, but there is a woman, whose name I forget, a woman who is on that commission who is interested and is willing to do it.
Perfect, perfect, okay. Okay, so then we'll, by the next meeting, hopefully we can get the interviews done for the citizens, and if anybody else is interested, please come forward.
What about the ordinance committee?
That's what that is.
Oh, that is, okay.
And the last item is the discussion of new town office hours, and Julie's going to take over on that.
Okay, so, um, the idea is now to extend our office hours from, and the new hours will be, hopefully, if the select board approves, uh, the office hours for the town office will be seven-thirty in the morning till six o'clock at night, five days a week. That will give people the opportunity to come in early or come in late and do their business. We're not closing, we didn't opt like a lot of the towns that close on Friday, because we just think that would be less convenient for the public. But what we will be doing is, employees will be working four ten-hour days versus, and will stagger those versus the eight-hour days. The town manager will still be here five days a week, but the office staff, the support staff will not. But I just think that that's something that was on our, I just want to point out. That was something that was brought up a long time ago, and this is the big list of goals they gave me when I started. This is my big list of goals.
I remember that.
Big list of goals.
I can bet off this afternoon.
So my big.
That list coming.
That big list is coming. This is one of those things I can cross off, is that we've addressed.
Maine voted, yeah.
Office hours. But I think that's.
She's been working her magic between now and then, though.
I've been magically appearing before them and sending good vibes, woo. But what we'd really like to, I, I think the office staff is excited about it, but I think the public should be excited about it, because I can't tell you how many times we get on the phone, could you just, can't we come in later? So we will be here, people will be happy, I think, I hope.
And it's not going to cost us any.
And it's not going to cost you any more money, and we're not closing, because that whole Friday thing. And then, you know, if you, everybody was like, well, we'll just take them, some, there was a suggestion of taking mornings off, and I'm just like, no, because that's just really confusing. The days have to be open every day, and you have to have a certain timeframe. And I understand a smaller offices doesn't work, but with our office, it'll work. And really, it's the only office that is affected, is the, the office. So you can register your vehicles and your boats.
Do you need a motion on that, Bill?
I don't think we do.
I think you do.
Do you want to have one?
Oh, I think you need to vote on it, yes. I think, I think.
I would move that.
All right.
Second.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Got it.